We're going to call to order this meeting of the Valley Center Planning and Zoning Board and Board of Zoning Appeals for September 28, 2021. Before we get started, I want to welcome everybody in attendance. Couple of quick things. So Brent and Ryan might have mentioned too, if you haven't signed in, please do sign in. I assume everybody's here probably for a particular item. When we call that item, there will be a point in time after Ryan discusses it that will open the public hearing. That then is your opportunity to speak on that item. And I'll make sure that's really clear that you know when that is, but just so you know kind of how the sequencing works as we go through each item, we'll make sure it's clear again that you know when your chance is to speak. So with that, we'll start with the roll call, please.
Gary Jansen.
Here.
Paul Freyer.
Here.
Brian Shelton.
Here.
Rick Schardner.
Here.
Myboy.
Here.
Steve Funway.
Here.
Bobby Matt.
Here. This is the first full group in quite a while. Okay, if everybody's had a chance to see the agenda, is that maybe for Rick? Do you have any questions or comments, additions? If there are none, I make a motion and we approve the agenda as presented.
I second it.
A motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is approval of the draft minutes from the July 27, 2021 meeting. Are there any questions or comments about the draft minutes? If not, I make a motion, we approve as presented.
And I'll second.
There's been a motion of second, all those in favor?
I have second.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sorry. All right, Ryan, any communications?
I would just add to what you said, Gary, if you will ask a member of the board to serve as timekeeper for your public hearing and then set that time for your personal time.
Okay.
Normally we've done five minutes.
Yeah.
And then one of the board members has to serve as the timekeeper.
Okay. Yeah, I don't mind, especially it helps when they have a few more people here. So I'll ask the vice chair if he doesn't mind being the timekeeper. Would that be okay, Paul? Yeah, I'll remind you when we get there. Okay, if you're ready, we're going to start off with our first public hearing item. The first item is review of LS 2021-03, application of Larry Hall pursuant to City Code 1609, who is petitioning for a lot split involving the splitting of property the applicant owns. Currently addressed as 1310 South Meridian in Valley Center. Ryan, it's yours.
All right, good evening, everyone. Yes, it is great to see everyone in person. Thank you for being here this evening and welcome to everyone in the audience. Our first application tonight, again, this property is along Meridian. This is on the east side of Meridian, just south of the petroleum terminal. And Mr. Hall is looking to split this lot into two parcels. As you see on the survey that was done by Mr. Armstrong, this is parcel A and parcel B. The intent is for Mr. Hall to sell parcel B to someone that would like to build a single family home on what would be now called parcel B. The survey has been accepted and found to be accurate in meeting the city standards for lot splits. For those of you that are newer to the board, how this process works is once a lot split is approved by you as the planning and zoning board, the survey, which is attached at the end of my staff report, that survey and a lot split certificate that is filled out by my office is submitted to the county register of deeds office for official recording, therefore creating two lots as shown in the survey with two separate legal descriptions and would allow Mr. Hall to sell what's designated as parcel B. It's important to note that neither of these parcels would be in the FEMA designated special flood hazard area or SFHA. And again, the new home that would be constructed, of course, that would go through the standard building permit process through my department, the community development department, and access will be off of Clarence Avenue. So again, we are not creating a landlocked property, which is always something that we look at very closely. The new home would connect off of Clarence. There's also public water that runs along Clarence that the builder of the home would be able to tie into as well. City staff recommends approval of this lot split. I'll stand for any questions. I believe that Mr. Hall is with us this evening. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan at this point? If not, it's 7:04 and we'll open up the public hearing. I did, sorry, I had a question that came to me, Ryan, no, sorry. I know you mentioned water, but I assume the easements are in place for all the other utilities.
So what would happen is, so the water would be connected off of Clarence and then they will have a septic tank, so they are not required to have a specific easement for their septic.
Well, but I'm talking about, sorry, for franchise utilities like electric and gas or whatever they might do.
That would be at time of application, that's going to be an agreement between the builder and the public. We do not regulate the public utilities.
Well, sorry, help me out here. Most properties I'm used to dealing with still have some type of easement in place to accommodate those public utilities. That's all I was asking about, is to make sure that the front lot's not served and the others can't be served from that. That's all I was asking.
Oh, okay. That is something that we could look at in creating an easement. There is not one proposed at this time because, again, this is just the lot split. When we get to the building permit, if an easement is needed by a public utility, we can look at it at that point.
Sure, I started a...
This is strictly, strictly just for the splitting of land. The building permit is an entirely separate process, normally handled internally by city staff.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Schrader.
Thank you for joining us.
We do have councilor, Mr. Chair Jansen, we do have right of way, of course, on Clarence Avenue. And so those utilities would then be served using that right of way, coming from the south of parcel B along Clarence Avenue, where those franchise utilities would use to access parcel B.
Okay. I was only asking because, I mean, I've been involved in lot splits before and once the lot's split, it's a little bit too late sometimes to resolve some of those other issues if they can't get through another lot. That's why I was asking. That makes sense.
So they come down, you know, Clarence Avenue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
I would invite, if the applicant would like to say anything, you're welcome to. You don't have to, but you're certainly welcome to. Okay, is there anybody else here who would like to speak on this item? And Ryan, I might ask real quick, so notification, and I think I saw a note of this, proper notification went out and no one has subjected to this?
That is correct. So property, sorry, public notices in the newspaper are gone use, as well as sentences surrounding property owners, no responses to this.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, it's 7:07, we'll close the public hearing and return the discussion to the board. Any questions or comments?
Not for me.
You didn't even have to time anybody.
It looks like a pretty easy lot split, but yeah, I agree with you on the right of, on the easements. Looking at the number of easements through there, it's got to be, so there's no conflict between the pipelines and the, and the water and sewer easement.
Right.
That's all I have.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I will make a motion that, based on city staff recommendations, public comments and discussion by the planning and zoning board, I move to approve LS 2021-03.
Second.
Rick, second. We have motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and good luck. You're welcome to stay around, but you certainly don't have to. Before we move on to the next item, I meant to recognize, City Councilmember Ron Colbert is in attendance tonight, and thank him for being here. Sorry, I miss you, sir. I had that in mind and it totally skipped my mind. Okay, moving on to the second item, review of SD 2021-03, application of Iron Horse Development LLC pursuant to Section 1604, is petitioning for approval of preliminary plat for a parcel of land located southwest of the intersection of Fifth Street and Seneca Street in Valley Center. Ryan.
All right, so this is the first official step in the creation of what will eventually be called the Trails Inn subdivision. Again, this is located south of Fifth Street and then along west of Seneca. This, the staff report indicates there's, there's a number, there are a number of supporting documents after this, including the preliminary plat. City staff has reviewed this and found it to conform with our city standards. What happens before you this evening is, again, so this is the preliminary plat, it's reviewed. Once this is approved by you as the planning and zoning board, the applicant can submit their final plat application. Again, it will be reviewed by the planning and zoning board and then is also submitted after you approve it to city council for final approval. Once final approval is given for the final plat by both the planning and zoning board and city council, it is also filed with the register of deeds office and will change from this configuration that you see here on page one of the staff report, just one lot with the floodway going through it into what you see as the preliminary plat. Will create just under 150 new single-family residential lots. There will also be seven new commercial lots created, as well as some reserve areas. I would note, the very last page provides an exceptional illustration of what the final area could look like, again, with the residential area being here in the yellow, the commercial here on the corner of Seneca and Fifth, and then a reserve area to the south for future development. And then, as discussed previously, this is part of the new Tiff district that was approved by city council earlier this year. There will be also a creation of a public park that would be owned and maintained by the city of Valley Center. Again, in conjunction with this, when the final plat is submitted, right now, a large portion of this property is in the floodplain, and so a flood study is being conducted right now by the company hired by the applicant. And so once that flood study comes in, they will move forward them at that point with the final plat. So this will not be, as indicated in the staff report, it was originally planned that the final plat would come before you next month. The plan right now is to delay that by 30 days and bring that before this body at the November meeting because they are waiting on the results of the flood study. That flood study will ensure that the filter that is brought in to raise the ground up out of the floodplain, that those new homes that will be built there will not flood, that they'll be raised appropriately above the base flood elevation, and that study is the next step. So once that's done, then they can proceed with both the final plat as well as a rezoning, which will be, which, those will be two separate applications that will come before you, the final plat and the rezoning to go from A1, which is what this property currently is zoned as an agricultural district, into R1B and C2, R1B being a single family, and then C2 is a general business district. Again, public notices were submitted to the newspaper as well as property owners. Just this morning, did receive one protest to this development. Someone does not want to have homes built, that was, and that was, they submitted an email to me, they did not want to see this development move forward, so we just see, did receive one protest to this proposed preliminary plat. At this time, city staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat and allowing the applicant to submit a final plat for a future date.
Hey, Ryan, on that flood study that's going to be going on, is that also going to be looking at the potential impact of raising this, this area, but also the potential impact of runoff outside of this area to the surrounding?
Yes. Yeah, it's looking at the entire region, yes. Not, not just this land, but the surrounding area as well. So, of course, we have not received that yet. What I can tell you is that the applicant is working with the state, the Division of Water Resources, on obtaining those necessary permits in order to do the filter project.
So in that same regards, this probably, and I think I'd heard Tim Minton this before, that it probably should provide some relief to Prairie Lakes, too.
Hopefully, hopefully. Again, we're just wait, we're waiting on the results of the study. Again, this area to the south, this is the, what you see in yellow, that is the remaining portion of platted Prairie Lakes but was never developed. So the Tiff district includes the area to the north that we're looking at as the Trails Inn subdivision, and then the area to the south, the south of what will become a city park that was never developed. So that is a separate floodplain development permit process as well. Because it has already been platted, it does not need to go before this board, it would just go through floodplain development, through the state, and then through my office. Once they obtain the necessary permits to do the filter, they'll do the filter work on this area as well. Once that's been approved as being removed from FEMA, then they would be able to obtain building permits for what you see here, the area in yellow that's part of Prairie Lakes.
Well, this is part of the overall development, too.
So it's part of the Tiff district, so this area in yellow and then the area to the north, or what we're looking at tonight as the preliminary plat, all of that shaded in area, as well as a little cursor area as well, will be eligible for using Tiff funds to help fund primarily all of the dirt work and all the mitigation involved in the floodplain work.
Got it, thank you.
But again, what we're looking specifically at tonight in the preliminary plat is the area to the north of Prairie Lakes.
Okay, any questions for Ryan at the moment? If there are none at 7:14, we'll open up the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak on this, or anybody else? Please give your name and address, and then you have five minutes.
All right, I'll try to keep it short. I'm Jake Basha, I'm the civil engineer on this preliminary plat. Address is 305 Odo Drive, Ute in Nebraska, with a company called SEH. So I've been working with the city the last few months on this project, a lot of, lot of good suggestions and working with the city back and forth on items like grading, utilities, site layout, things like that, access. I think we have surprised the city on all their requests. A couple of clarifications, with the basin that we'll be constructing or excavating that will become the, the park, that, that will generate the dirt for the single-family commercial in the reserve area, the cut that will generate all the fill for the areas to the north. So we're not bringing dirt from offsite, just to clarify. The park area acting as a detention basin, we estimate will gen, will supply over 230 acre feet of storage for floodwaters.
That's what I was wondering, and you, you know, you're...
So we're, we're thinking around 230 acre feet is what it's going to allow for storage, which is significant compared to what's there now. What's there now is levees, unofficial levees on both sides of the, of the channel that runs through. So there's really no storage there now, so we generate a lot of storage for that, for the floodwaters in that area. Yep. And that, like I said, that cut will generate the fill for the area to the north. And working with the city on utility locations, tie-in locations, utility sizes, things like that, we have a few more items just to go through as we go through final plat and getting this thing across, across the finish line as we finish the drainage study and everything. But I'm here for questions, if you have any.
Thank you. What's the estimation at this point of size of storm it would take to inundate this park? Do you know, or to put any portion, good portion of it underwater? Are you expecting to stay within the channel the majority of the time, or?
Yes, majority of the time it will stay within the channel, and we're essentially widening that channel out, so creating a, creating a bathtub, essentially.
Do you expect to be a larger, what?
The rain events will fill it up.
Hundred-year and larger would fill it up, probably?
Yep, correct.
I was just curious.
Yep.
It seems like in recent years, we've had multiple hundred-year events in the same year, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And storm sewer that will come from the site and enter the basin will then have flapgates so things can't back up into the storm sewer system, similar to Chisholm Creek like you have now.
I think it's a good idea, and I hope this all works out, especially with what's happened in this whole area, and I think it's great to see this develop. I was curious, from the perspective of, and I don't want to get sidetracked here, Ryan, from our purpose tonight, but talking about the use of Tiff funds in building a public park, I just wondered, I'm sure it'll be usable plenty of times.
Right.
I've run into this before in another part of Wichita, and public perception is not ideal if you build a park, that's going to end up being underwater, so I'm sure you're on top of that, I was just curious. Anything else?
Did you say you have enough fill from the park to be the residence or the residence and the commercial?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you have enough fill from the park to do the residence only, or the residence, residential area and the commercial area?
Oh, the entire area, yep. Yep, right now, we're right about there. We do need to finalize our drainage report to make sure the base flood elevation drops to the level that we hope it does, so that we can keep our, our fill numbers where they're at, and we don't need to increase them.
So you're anticipating probably a drop of at least five to seven feet, probably for that park?
Yep, from, you're talking from the area to the north down to the park, yep, approximately five, seven, somewhere around there, yep. And it is extremely flat right now. I mean, there is about three feet of drop and a thousand feet, so not much moves out there right now.
All right. Well, thank you, I think this looks good. Is there any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public who'd like to speak on this item? You're, you're welcome to come up now. Well, but if you come up to the podium, you certainly can, but if you come up to the podium and give us your name and address, you can address questions to us, we'll address them to him.
Garrett Withar, 8110 North Seneca Street, my property is just to the east on the map there. Your cursor is. My question is, basically, I've been doing some research and there can be changes to the floodplain zone, the base floodplain can be moved up to an inch more for development, and I was just wondering if that one inch of tolerance will be used, counted for in this new area?
I might have you address that if you don't mind.
Yeah. We're intending the base flood elevation could move up to approximately two feet down.
In the good direction, down.
Down.
Correct.
Yes, we've asked about the, this can contain a hundred-year flood. Is there any extra tolerance, maybe do, does 120% of that, or any extra?
And I only threw that out as an example, so I wasn't asking about, about maximum, but if you want to address that, I'd...
Sure, I'd say at this point, that's as much as I know on the drainage analysis at this point. Like I said, the drainage study is being completed by another company that's kind of working through all of those detailed information right now, so I probably shouldn't comment any further on.
I've got one question. If the, the park area does, does flood, is there some kind of, is there a developer reserve to restore that, that land, or is that going to become an obligation of the HOA?
I guess to clarify, the park area will eventually then be handed over to the city of Valley Center. That is the one reserve area that will be handed over to the city for their maintenance.
Okay.
So to answer Paul's question, and I'm not picking on you when I say this, and I hate to keep belaboring this, but if there's a big enough event, especially with what happens downstream and water sits there for very long and starts killing things out, it's going to be up to the city to take care of it? And that's fine, I think that's what Paul was asking.
The, the design of that area, that park area, needs to be very strategic to account for those types of things.
Right, then that's a good point.
And the, what's the drop on that channel from the top of the development to the bottom of development? What do you anticipate for a drop?
Oh, you're, you're talking from the east side to the west side, basically?
Right, to the, yeah, the beginning, where the head end of the, of the channel to the, to the exit of that channel.
I believe it's in the neighborhood of about six feet.
Okay, so you...
I couldn't be sure, but that's, you're in the neighborhood of that.
Have, have you thought about any minor retention structures so that it can pond for the drop down?
So...
Pond again, from a standpoint of aesthetics?
Yep, absolutely. So that's one thing that we initially were looking at really hard. We will run into groundwater at some elevation, not too deep from where we're at right now. So then you get into water appropriations permitting and things like that, that might prevent us from accomplishing it.
So if that channel was deeper, that would be possible? Or is that not?
We, well, some of our initial designs included excavation of a pond area within the channel that runs through it, yep.
Okay.
We're afraid that running into groundwater and contaminating groundwater...
Are there, are there proposed houses going to be on slab? Are these going to be permitted basements?
There'll be permitted basements.
They are, yeah. So the, part of the basement will be below hundred-year flood?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. That was a lot more informative than our last presentation on this project. Is there anything else? Did that answer your questions?
Yeah, I think maybe the other thing is, I guess the water can't go backwards underneath the center. But backfill or...
I probably shouldn't comment on anything drainage related that is kind of a detailed question of that nature that I, I can't speak on.
So we could get answers back to it maybe sometime later.
Yeah, so the final drainage plan will be submitted to city staff, this is where city engineer, public works department, for approval, again, as part of the overall development process. What we're looking at tonight is strictly the preliminary plat, looking at...
Right.
At the layout.
Right.
The drainage is absolutely critical and essential, and we will approve that before, before anything is done.
And of course, the other one is going to be the traffic that hits Fifth Street.
Absolutely.
And that's going to be, that whole traffic study on Fifth Street is going to be an issue. And then more something's going to be sensitive anyway, to flow traffic during drive time. Yeah, okay.
Thank you. If you have a question, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, please.
I was just wanting to make sure, Kathy George, and I live directly north, my husband and I, of Fifth Street and Seneca, behind Dr. Horns, does that mean there'll be a turning lane all the way from Valley Center all the way out in the center?
I don't, Ryan, I don't know, or anybody else?
No, on 85th Street.
On 85th, I think she's wanting to know adjacent to the development on 85th, is there going to be any turn lanes? I had asked that question before, and I don't know what the traffic impact study showed or if it ha, if it has yet.
I'm asking.
We have ample right of way for right-hand turn lane, there's one at Seneca.
All right, adjacent to the plat right there on 85th Street, where you've got the two entrances, the two openings, I assume that's, I think she's asking if there's going to be any left turn lanes in there.
Doors.
I believe the city requested a traffic study on, on...
Okay.
So then you get into water appropriations permitting and things like that, that might prevent us from accomplishing it.
So if that channel was deeper, that would be possible? Or is that not?
We, well, some of our initial designs included excavation of a pond area within the channel that runs through it, yep.
Okay.
We're afraid that running into groundwater and contaminating groundwater...
Are there proposed houses going to be on slab? Are these going to be permitted basements?
There'll be permitted basements.
So the part of the basement will be below hundred-year flood?
Correct.
Thank you. That was a lot more informative than our last presentation on this project. Is there anything else? Did that answer your questions?
Yeah, I think maybe the other thing is, I guess the water can't go backwards underneath the center. But backfill or...
I probably shouldn't comment on anything drainage-related that is kind of a detailed question of that nature that I can't speak on.
So we could get answers back to it maybe sometime later?
Yeah, so the final drainage plan will be submitted to city staff, specifically our city engineer, public works department, for approval, again, as part of the overall development process. What we're looking at tonight is strictly the preliminary plat looking at the layout.
Right.
The drainage is absolutely critical and essential, and we will approve that before anything is done.
And of course, the other one is going to be the traffic that hits Fifth Street. And that's going to be, that whole traffic study on Fifth Street is going to be an issue. And more, something's going to be sensitive anyway, to flow traffic during drive time. Yeah, okay.
Thank you. If you have a question, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, please.
I was just wanting to make sure. Kathy George, and I live directly north, my husband and I, of Fifth Street and Seneca, behind Dr. Horn's. Does that mean there'll be a turning lane all the way from Valley Center all the way out in the center?
I don't, Ryan, I don't know, or anybody else?
No, on 85th Street.
On 85th. I think she's wanting to know adjacent to the development on 85th, is there going to be any turn lanes? I had asked that question before, and I don't know what the traffic impact study showed, or if it has yet.
We have ample right-of-way for right-hand turn lane. There's one at Seneca.
Right, adjacent to the plat right there on 85th Street, where you've got the two entrances, the two openings. I assume that's, I think she's asking if there's going to be any left turn lanes in there.
I believe the city busted a traffic study on...
Okay, yeah.
So maybe we don't know just yet?
Okay.
And you're on Seneca north of Dr. Horn's office? Sorry, I totally heard that wrong, I got you. So Ryan, the final plat will come to us, correct? Same notification? And at that time, Ryan, we'll be able to answer the questions about...
At that time, traffic should be finalized in terms of, if there are any turn lanes. I would also remind the board that the city is in the process of applying for grant. Okay. So again, at a future time, Seneca will be completely redone, and at that point, we'll look at, I hope we have turn lanes that are completed. Are our turn lanes included in the city's application for those approvals on Seneca?
I'm talking about 85th.
That one address?
Oh, okay.
But again, we will look, our city engineer will work with the applicant on figuring this traffic area out, and what specifically will be available in terms of turn lanes.
So that we can answer that question, and the final drainage questions at that point.
Again, this is why we have preliminary plats to hammer off these issues, to iron everything else, so that when the final plat comes, these issues are questioned. So again, this is preliminary.
Sure, good, thank you.
I know when you guys widen the street and put the turning lane, and I called over, and I don't know who I talked to, but we have had at least probably six people rear-ended at our driveway, and they didn't even know that. And I, we thought that they were going to widen that there, where our driveway is, so that people could pull in our driveway without getting hit. So that was the, that was really the concern, so.
Got it, thank you. Is that your driveway that lines up with the major entrance there? Can you see on that picture?
I think the driveway there is the tree farm and the one to the right.
That's the tree farm, so that, okay, all right, I got you. Yeah, that would be too far west, okay. Anybody else from the public who'd like to speak on this item? If not, at 7:29, we'll close the public hearing and return the discussion to the board. Are there any questions or comments? And I would remind you that we are only approving the preliminary plat tonight, and to keep in mind that the questions that have been brought up, we will expect to be addressed with the final plat. If there are no questions or comments, if I can find it. Based on city staff recommendations, public comments and discussion by the planning and zoning board, I make a motion to approve SD 2021-03.
Second.
Second by Rick. The motion is second, others in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for being here, you're welcome to stay around, but you certainly don't have to. Next item is review of SD 2021-04, application of Art Marquez pursuant to Section 1604, who is petitioning for approval of a preliminary plat for the land located north of Ford Street and west of Craig Street, currently addressed as 2740 East Ford and Valley Center. Ryan?
All right, again, this is, so this is again, a preliminary plat for area north of Ford Street. We do have the applicant with us this evening. This will create 62 new single-family residential lots for development. You can see the layout here on the preliminary plat. Again, city staff has reviewed this preliminary plat and found it to meet the requirements, again, for the preliminary plat stage. We are working on a few issues as well, like we are with Trails End at this time. I would note that earlier this year, the applicant did receive a few waivers from city council, namely, a waiver for the use of curb and gutter roadways to allow for open ditches, and then a waiver of the requirement of placing sidewalks. And then lastly, the use of alternative sanitary sewer systems in lieu of the extension of the public sewer. This project will tie into city water, so the homes that are built in this new subdivision will have public water and then a private sewer service for each lot. The size of the lots do conform with this style. And then, similar to Trails End, once this preliminary plat is approved, the applicant has already submitted their final plat application to meet the public notice deadline. And so at the October 26 Planning and Zoning Board meeting, it is proposed that the final plat be reviewed, which will be submitted to you, of course, in advance of the meeting, and have been, and will have been reviewed by city staff for approval, along with the rezoning application. So again, this property is also Zone Day One, which is our agricultural district, and we will propose to be rezoned to RR1, which is a suburban residential district to conform with the construction of new single-family homes. Public notice was sent to Ark Valley News, as well as the property owners with 200, within the 200-foot requirement, and no public responses, no written or call responses have been received in regards to this preliminary plat. The applicant does have a brief PowerPoint presentation that they would be happy to share with the board during the public hearing.
That sounds good, Ryan. Any questions to start?
No, I think we must do PowerPoint.
If that's, if not, we'll open up the public hearing at 7:33, and if you would like to show your PowerPoint, have at it, please.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Ray, I'm a planner with JU Consulting Group, representing the applicant, Art Marquez, who is also here with us this evening. So real quickly, go through this. All right. So as Ryan said, 62 new lot, residential lots, half-acre lots in a rural setting. So this is a housing typology that's currently not available in the community, so it's a little bit different than anything else, as well as what you've seen here this evening. So hopefully, you can get some additional housing choices for more people as you continue to grow. These are approximately half-acre lots, about 20,000 square feet, will be connected to public water, and have alternative sanitary sewer. So the intents behind this, I'll just quickly walk through that, was really to create that rural setting, maintaining the ditches for the drainage, as well as the existing drainage that comes through there, will be done by the HOA, not by the city. So it's important to note that there are, there's a ridge line that comes through here, so we actually go to the north, as well as to the south. The majority of the watershed does drain to the south, and has a pretty substantial riparian tree area, which is why you see that green reserved lot through there, that allows us access to maintain that, as well as to preserve most of that tree line, which is one of the assets of this particular site, and one of the reasons that we think that that is an advantage, to have those open space aesthetics, and potentially have trail or something in that area, once we get down to that level of working that out. So what else am I talking about? That's kind of really, that's most of it. These are some of the proposed houses that Art's currently looking at, just to give you a feel for what it would potentially look like on these large lots, for some spacious living in the countryside, and providing an opportunity to have lots that are between that, you know, that quarter acre size, and then the large three acres that you're seeing, to create a unique subdivision here. The water system that I didn't really talk about will be connected from the new Cedar Hill development directly to our west. We will be connecting in with their water, and then connecting back to Ford Street as Ford Street's being rebuilt to create that loop system. And then it could also be extended to the north in the future, should something develop in there to continue your water system and connect it. That's really it. If you have other questions, Art and I are both here for you.
Thank you, that's good stuff, that's nice to see. So what did you, I'm asking out of curiosity, this area up front, I know it's kind of encumbered by pipeline easements, did you say that there's some plans for that?
Yeah, so the J-Hawk pipeline that runs through there is, this is kind of unique, it's the first time I've experienced this in 25 years of professional planning. It's a partially vacated line, so the easement's been partially vacated, J-Hawk's not fully releasing the entire vacation until the actual pipe structure that has been abandoned is removed. So that will be up to our, us, as we remove that in that one section that it comes through there, once that pipe is removed, then that portion of the easement will be fully vacated, and then we can put houses in that structure.
Well, it's nice to have that opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Originally, we looked at it and went, ah, this is a pain, how are we going to work around this? Of course, it's at an angle. So yeah, and then talking with them, it was able, we were able to work that out, and they've already relocated, and they're going actually forward, so it worked out well.
Well, good. Any questions? Mr. Marquez, it's good to see you back, it's been a while. I know you've looked at doing things with this land in the past, I think this looks like a good plan, I hope it works out for you. Well, good. Thank you, Jeff, I think we're good. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak on this item? If, okay.
Craig, I just, I don't see where it's coming into that neighborhood, I don't see, like, where this plat actually is. I just know I was notified it was close to the house. Oh, my, yeah, my sheet just had a bunch of letters and numbers, you know, and I couldn't tell what.
Yeah, sure, if you can help out.
If you could go back to that other picture, that would be great. Okay, so it would be entering off of 77, or off of 77.
Right there, so this is the area they're talking about, what you see there. So there's Craig, right there.
Yeah, so this would be houses here, too.
Right. So there is a reserve, there is a reserve area on the south, and then the houses will start north of that.
Okay.
But yeah, the turn-in would be approximately somewhere. Perfect, that's all I needed to know.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this item? If not, at 7:39, we'll close the public hearing and return the discussion to the board. Any questions or comments? If not, I would make a motion that based on city staff recommendations, public comments and discussion by the planning and zoning board, I make a motion to approve SD 2021-04. Thank you. The motion is second, others in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, and good luck, I hope it works out for you. Good, good, pretty good timing with 77th Street, about ready to get rebuilt, too, so... Good. Last item on our public agenda is review of V 2021-03, application of Marvin Ulbridge, pursuant to City Code 171008, who is petitioning for a front yard building setback variance of eight feet, to allow for the construction of a covered porch to the existing house at 454 North Sheridan. Ryan?
All right, thank you again. The applicant is with us this evening, and as stated in the brief summary, is requesting a variance to allow for a covered porch to be added to his home on the front, or what is, what would be the west side of the property. And so in this zoning district, which is R1B, the standard front yard setback is 25 feet, and so the variance would change that from 25 feet to 17 feet. The city staff has reviewed this application and found it to be acceptable. There are no utilities in the front that, as provided in the survey, and so we're not looking at impacting any potential utility lines. There will still be 17 feet of open space between the property line and the edge, the western edge of the front porch. The applicant did supply a letter as well to the board for your review, which talks about why he is requesting this variance to allow, and why he wants to construct his porch. City staff does recommend approval of this application. Again, public notice was sent to the newspaper and to surrounding property owners, and no public comment was received by city staff.
Thank you, Ryan. So do us a favor, even if everybody here knows, and explain the purpose of a building setback. I think this is fine, but explain the purpose of a building setback, and why we should allow an encroachment.
So the purpose of a building setback is for multiple public safety reasons, as well as aesthetics, in this case, in most cases, is to allow for the placement, potential placement of utilities, as well as provide, again, if there was a fire or another public emergency where public safety staff needed access to this, it provides them area access to not only the front, we also have, as you know, side yard setbacks, as well as rear setbacks. But again, this is, this allows a property, a house, to be built to conform within that, so that there remains open space in the case of a public emergency.
Got it, thank you. So we've taken these as they've come, one at a time, and, you know, I think this makes sense, and then it's kind of neat to see people want to do things like this, so...
Particularly in the front setback, again, I would add to that, another aspect of public safety is, especially when you get close to intersections or corners, making sure that we're not, not creating any issues with vision triangles. If something is too close to the street, that someone can't, if they're making a turn, that we're not impacting and making potential traffic issues. This particular property is not near an intersection, so that's not an issue, but again, one of the reasons we have setbacks is also to maintain openness for the safe flow of traffic.
Thank you, and you've looked at those things here, and staff would see none of those problems, okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Ryan. If no questions, at 7:43, we'll open up the public hearing. Mr. Ulbridge, I assume, if you'd like to speak on this, we have to keep the public hearing open for a minute, so you're welcome to come up to the podium, at least kill a minute of time for us. Yeah, if you don't, if you don't mind.
All of them are built in 1956. They're a year older than I am, but they're all pretty much same. There are some houses down to the north of me that have added on to the front of their houses, so I can't see where my little, well, they're about the same, about eight foot. I got a great big tree right there, next to where I want the porch to go, Chinese elm, there's two big ones in my front yard. So you're talking about the setback and having anything in there, those trees have been there ever since I've been there, and I've been there for about 40 years now. What I have right now is just, it's just a little four-foot deal, cement slab, and the roof comes out. You can't even step out to get the mail off the side of the house without getting wet, it's raining. So I'm going to add on to that to help that out, and people coming to my house, if it's raining, they can stand there until I come to the door without, it's, I mean, it's little right now, it's, this is the way they were built back then. And the other night, I missed a good thunderstorm. It'd have been nice to been out there to sit on it and...
I appreciated seeing your, I appreciated seeing your letter, I think that's a great reason to build up boards, yeah.
But it, yeah, it's all right now.
Okay. I'm assuming there's no questions or comments, if not, I'll just make one more motion, and that is, based on city staff recommendations, public comments and discussion by the planning and zoning board, I make a motion to approve SD 20... Oh, I missed that one, wait, did I get that one right? V, how about I make a motion to approve V 2021-03? Sorry, I was on the wrong line. I just got second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, others in favor? Thank you, sir, appreciate you being here.
Yay.
That was good, that was quite a few items, Ryan, you really saved up for us. We'll have more next time. Any new business?
No, the only item I have is, if you will, go ahead, put October 26 on your calendar, we'll be right to meet.
Older unfinished business? Staff reports? I would like to commend the city administrator for a job well done, as always. Okay, items by the planning commissioners, does anybody have anything specific you'd like to add, ask about, anything else? Now's your chance. If not, I move we adjourn.
Oh, second.
We got a whole bunch of them there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned, thank you.